Hello, ladies and gentlemen, thank you and welcome to the July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen zoning board meeting for the town of Merrimack. If you could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, one in justice.
Kathleen, if you'd please read the preamble.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinance set out a criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant the request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the community development office and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers, if you have an antique pager.
Alright, thank you. The next zoning board meeting will be August twenty-ninth. Tonight, we have four members, so I just want to put this out right now for everybody. All petitions coming forward, you need to get at least three in favor in order for the petition to move forward. If you do not get three in favor, if you get two, two, two yeses, two noes, the petition is done. So, you need, if you want to do a continuance in... To next month's meeting, I don't want to make you sit here and wait through an entire meeting if, to come forward, so you have that option. One second. And then, with the Daniel D. Jessman and APMK Adventures, Lenny is going to be accusing himself due to conflict of interest, so there would only be three board members hearing that. Therefore, you would have to get all three in an affirmative in order for that to pass. Before I go to the swearing-in, is there anybody that has any questions that would like to move their petition to August? Attorney Michael. Sorry? Oh, so moved, okay. Thank you. Alright, everyone else, if you plan on speaking this evening, if you could please rise and raise your right hand, right hand to be sworn in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Okay, have a seat. When you come up, when you come up front, you'll see that the microphone light's already on, please sign in, state your name for the record. Before I go to the first petition, we're going to, I'm gonna, just real quickly, and I'm gonna read this into the record and just move this as far as... What? Oh, I'm sorry, Rod is sitting in for Rich, Kathleen is sitting in for Fran, and Lenny is sitting in for Lynn. Give me one second, I'm gonna read this petition in, we're just gonna, this has to be written and moved to August, so bear with me, folks. Daniel D. Jessman, petitioner and APMK, A-M-P-K Ventures LLC owner, variance under section two point zero two point three B of the zoning ordinance to permit a contractor yard in the general commercial district. The parcel is located at seven zero two Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial tax map, seven E lot zero two three dash zero one case number two thousand and eighteen dash nineteen has been moved to the August.
Can we just do a formal motion, just to, just to be clear?
Okay. I just, I, okay, oh, thank you. Is, is requesting to be moved to the August twenty-ninth meeting, can I have a motion and a second on this, please? Okay, motion by Kathleen, seconded by Rod, all in favor of movies to August, say aye, aye? So, three, zero, one. Thank you. Alright. Next up, Jonathan and Nicole Kennedy, petitioner-owner, variance under section, under section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty by twenty living room addition with a twelve-foot, five-inch rear setback where as forty feet is required. The parcel is located at eight Forest Drive in the R Residential District, tax map five C lot two eight eight, case number two thousand and eighteen dash seventeen. Hi. Just make sure you speak into the mic, the light should be on.
Is that better?
Yeah. Should be on, yeah, I can't hear you, but go ahead. Alright, so what do we, so kind of give me just a five-minute, what are we looking at here, what are you looking to do?
Yeah, well, first and foremost, thanks for seeing us, John Kennedy, thirty-year resident of Merrimack, six-year resident, well, six-year homeowner in Merrimack, so, I've been with the town a long time. Just looking to stay in Merrimack, to extend off the side of our house to put a twenty by twenty living room on.
Okay. So, you have five, you have the five criteria that you had written up. If you could read in each criteria to the record and then we may stop, we'll stop after each one, we may have some questions.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Actually, can you also state your name?
Yes, of course, Nicole Kennedy, I'm also, I'm a thirty-two-year member of Merrimack here and also, this is my sixth year owning, so, we've both been Merrimack residents for a while. So, first point, so granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. By making our home, this is gonna make our home look better, it's going to extend our current home. This is gonna improve the value of the other homes on the street. With conservation land both beside and behind us, this would not affect our neighbors and the addition would set twenty feet into the side yard and twenty feet into the backyard.
Any questions on that? Okay, number two, please.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because there is conservation land to the left and behind us and the addition is going to the left. There's not a home that would, that would object to it being so close to them. And I don't know if I can mention anything in addition. We have spoken to the neighbor that does live right next to where the addition will be and they have absolutely no issues, so...
Any questions? Okay.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for our additional space for our growing family to expand. We want to stay in Merrimack as we love the town and we love the school system. We do have two little girls, three and one, and we're realizing we're running out of space, so...
Questions? Alright, number four.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will be diminished. This would allow us to stay at our property and we take very good care of our yard, the addition would only improve the value of our home.
Questions? Number five?
Owing to special conditions of property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because due to the very unique shape of our lot and the area our house is set, we will be close to our lot line. There's no other area on our home that we would be able to expand.
Questions? Alright, that was, the next one, I think it's B, or two, sorry.
Oh, yes, two. The proposed use is a reasonable one because we need additional living space in our current home to accommodate our growing family. We love our neighborhood and want to stay in our home that we've owned for six years. We also do not want to move out of Merrimack, which could result in not being able to do that.
Any questions on that? Everybody feel unnecessary hardship was covered? Okay, you don't have to read B. So, I guess, I'm looking at the house, I don't know if you can see it, so I'm looking at the property here, is the porch going here or is it going here?
It's going to...
Here?
The left of the actual house, so if you're looking at the house, so Forest Drive is here.
So, over by where all the trees are?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
There's a picture attached at the end there.
Yeah, okay, that, okay.
Or there should be.
Okay, I see it.
Right here. So, it'll be right here on the side.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I didn't see the diagram. Alright, go ahead.
The lot to the left, which I think is where you're putting the deck. What is that lot, is that just a vacant lot owned by, there's a, yours is two eighty-eight, there is a space, I'm looking at this, I'm sorry. Looking at this and for the, the next lot is two nine zero, I'm sorry, you don't have that.
There's a picture right there.
Oh, sorry.
That's the diagram.
So, you're at two eighty-eight and then directly above you, according to this picture, is two ninety. What is that space in between two eighty-eight and two ninety?
So, this is considered free space, is that the term?
Yeah, I believe it's open space associated with the, there's a condominium complex near there and I think it's open space related to that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we were, we did notify everybody in the condominium via letter, so...
And this all, here's conservation. So, is this actually cutting into, is this cutting into conservation land?
No, it's staying entirely on their property.
Okay. It's just coming closer to the line, okay.
Yeah, basically, they're encroaching on the line that would, about the condo, the open space of the condo.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Alright, let's open this up to the public, is there anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody who'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Discussion from the board. Discussions, motions? Alright, make a motion.
I move that we grant the variance to Jonathan and Nicole Kennedy under section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty by twenty living room addition with a twelve point five rear setback where as forty feet is required. This parcel is located at eight Forest Drive in the R four residential district, tax map five C lot two eighty-eight, case number two zero one eight dash one seven.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Rod. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four zero zero. Congratulations.
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, just so you know, if you, if you start construction within the first thirty days, it is at your own risk because people, people can come back and appeal our decision within thirty days, but after that, you're free and clear.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, next up is Karen Gomes? Did I say that right? Okay. Petitioner-owner, variance under section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an eight by thirty-six, six-foot farmer's porch within twenty-five feet front setback where as thirty feet is required. The parcel is located at fifty-one Brookside Drive in the R one residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map six C lot zero six eight, case number two thousand and eighteen dash eighteen. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good!
It is eight foot, not six foot. I don't know if that's a misprint on your part.
It's an eight-foot farmer's porch?
Yes.
Okay. It does say six foot in the document here.
Eight feet, I have eight feet.
I have eight foot, I have eight foot by thirty-six, six.
Oh, eight foot by thirty-six, six, did I say six foot? I apologize. I can't even tell you how bad this week has been for me, so, I apologize, so, eight foot by thirty-six by six. Alright, what, can you give me just, real quick, what are we looking at here?
Okay, we just basically would like to put a farmer's porch in the front, the length of the house by eight feet, which is just gonna be taking basically where all the shrubbery is in the place. Also, I'm having the steps go from the, from, coming in from the driveway side, so it will be underneath the overhang. The reason, and not in the front, so that you won't have steps in the front cutting down. The reason why, one of the reasons why I want to do this is because my husband, Anani, over there, he's on, he, on dialysis and he does a peritoneal, which is the fluids that come into the house on the machine, which we have at least thirty cases a month delivered. In this wintertime, with the steps getting icy, a lot of times they can't come up the front, so we have to go in the garage and up the stairs into the house, so it's, it makes it difficult.
The house, I went by the house, it's pretty, it's pretty setback from the road as it is.
Yes.
Yeah, so you get a good amount.
And it's kind of got a little hill, so it makes it look further back.
Okay. So, you have the five points that you had written out, if you could just read each one and stop after which one in case there's questions, please, thank you.
Number one, it would be adding value to house, it would only make the house look nicer and it would not depreciate any surrounding homes in the area. The farmer's porch will comply to the approved plan.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, number two.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because asking for the five-foot setback would not interfere with any other surrounding properties and will not be intrusive to the neighborhood.
Any questions on that? Number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would make it easier for the dialysis supply people to, to make it into the house. It would also be nice for us to be able to sit out and enjoy the porch.
Questions? Number four.
For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. This will only add value to the property and also will not affect any other surrounding properties in any, it would only beautify the neighborhood. And I also spoke to my neighbor directly across the street and she says she has no issues with it and if there's any, she would write a letter or if there anything she could do. And she also told me she talked to a couple of other neighbors who feel the same way, they have no issues.
Okay, that's good to know. Any questions on number four? Alright, number five?
Unnecessary hardship, the house was built in nineteen seventy-two and at this time, there was no need for a farmer's porch. And the front yard setback is now needs to conform. The porch is not overly, overly sized for its use.
Questions on that one? Nope? It'll be number two.
Okay, the purpose used for reasonable one is because the porch would be useful for the delivery of the dialysis packages and safety for both the delivery person and for us and for the, in the general public.
Any questions on that? Does everybody feel that that's, covers unnecessary hardship? Any questions for the petitioners? I'm gonna open up the public hearing, is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is anybody who'd like to speak against this petition? Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing, seems like it's pretty straightforward, if you've been by the house, I think that it's got a good amount of setback as it is, so I think the farmer's porch shouldn't be that big of a issue, but if there's any discussion items or people wanna... Anything, anything to discuss going forward?
It's pretty straightforward.
You know what I need to hear?
I guess it's five feet short of the eight feet of the, what it would, if there was an eight-foot porch, it's five feet short of the variance.
Okay, yeah. Alright, yeah, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Karen A. Gomes under section three point oh five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an eight by thirty-six, a six-inch farmer's porch with a twenty-five-foot setback where as thirty feet is required. The parcel is located at fifty-one Brookside Drive in the R one residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map six C lot zero six eight, case number two zero one eight dash eighteen.
Do, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Rod, seconded by Kathleen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four zero zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeez, yeah, yeah, I gotta do that. Thank you very much, have a good evening, folks. Thank you. Next, Apple Development Limited Partnership, petitioner-owner, variance under section seventeen point one zero point four G of the zoning ordinance to permit a parcel with more than one business establishment to have wall signs throughout the property measuring two square feet per sign face per linear foot of building facade where as one square foot of, where as one square foot of sign per face per linear foot is permitted where ground signage is also present. The parcel is located at three sixty Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial Aquifer Conservation Planed Residential Overlay and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, tax map four D dash three lot zero zero one, case number two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-one. You're, you were here when I said that you have to get every, at least three yeses?
We were here, thank you.
And you still want to proceed, okay, great. If you could just state your name and tell us real quick what we're looking at here?
I can, my name is Derek Lick, I'm an attorney at the Soloway and Hollis Law Office, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
We're here today on an issue with respect to signage. And before we get, go any further, Mr. Barsamian is the owner of the development, the part, one of the partners of the development. He was not here when you swore everyone in, in the event he speaks, I was gonna ask you to swear him in, just in case.
Can you just stand real quick?
Sure, sorry.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, we're here on the Merrimack development on the highway, the three sixty Daniel Webster Highway, this is the new development you've seen going in. The specific issue tonight is one of signage, we have tenants that are starting to fit up the building, they're starting to arrive and an issue has arisen with respect to sign, signage, given that there is a ground-mounted sign, which you'll see if you walk down the road now. Under the ordinance, when you have a ground-mounted sign, the signage allowed on the building itself for each of the tenants is cut in half from two square feet per linear foot of face to one square feet. And the tenants have asked my client to come forward and seek a variance so that they can have the typical size of signage even though there is a ground-mounted sign. And I'm gonna walk through, if we can, just briefly, I understand you usually like to go one by one through the criteria. I'll do that and hopefully answer some of your questions as we go through there. So, the first criteria is granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The primary issue here is one in which we have a very large commercial site with the buildings on which the retail are located are really far back from the roadway. I believe it's about two hundred fifty to three hundred feet from the roadway and it makes it very difficult using the one foot, one square foot per linear foot to be seen from that roadway, particularly given that you have a bunch of smaller tenants, so their front, fronts are very small and narrow, which means the signs under the ordinance have to be small and narrow as well. So, what we've articulated here is that here, you do allow a sign the size that we want, but only if there is no ground-mounted sign in front. And here, we're asking for both. And the reason for that is, the public needs to be able to see the signage both on the building and on the front pylon in order to make a decision to be able to turn into the development and understand what's there. I think you've seen the sign that's currently present on the, on the road, it's very well done, the design is nice and the size of the individual tenants' signs on that are gonna be relatively small, just because of the nature of how many tenants are there. So, what we are saying here is due to the size and the layout of this particular site being very long, very large, fourteen acres, having basically eight hundred or more feet of frontage and having signs on the walls being approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet from the roadway, we need the full-size signage so that the public can understand what's there and so that they can see where they are going, what tenants are there. And importantly, I think the purpose of the ordinance is to, is to ensure that you don't have a bunch of cluttered signage, it's not confusing and it's not visually overwhelming. Because of the size of this site, we don't face that risk here. I go down to the second issue.
Actually, hold on one second. So, the question I have is, you know, we have, we have an older picture, Rob, of the, of it, and, I mean, it's got, it's got Bank of America and Pacific Fusion there, which obviously, you know, some... Those sign, that, those letters that I'm looking at, I'm looking at picture, is that in line or is that the one, is that what it want, the one foots per square foot looks?
I didn't check the building permit records beforehand, but no variances such as this have been issued before, so the only conclusion I could make would be that that would be the one times. Because, well, I, I, and I can't even necessarily say that because I don't know if all of those signs were on the ground sign that was there. Because I don't remember that every single tenant that was in this plaza was on that ground sign, I don't think there was space for it.
And up by the, up by the tractor place, are those one foot or two foot per square?
They should all be one foot. I, again, I don't have the permit records in our office, I didn't review all of that beforehand.
And then, the reason I asked, the reason I asked that is that, you know, when you're saying about public interest, I mean, and I might be skipping ahead, but it, it just seems that, I mean, you could, if you could see the sign from the road, and, and I know you can in those, in those two instances, I was just, I was curious as to why the two feet, because it seems like you're talking a really big sign for some of those places.
One of the concerns we have, and it's, it's a little bit of a unique site, not only for its size, but also because of the turn-in lanes. If you were heading northbound, you have one opportunity to turn in and that one opportunity is by the pylon sign that's there currently. If you don't see the individual tenant and the little signs that are there, you have to look all the way down across the entire length of the property on the far end to see which sign, which tenants are there that you might want to turn into. So, it's important that, even though you, it's even further than when you drive by it, you're down, way down, looking all the way across the parking lot at signage. We think that's important to be able to let folks identify it coming in the northbound direction because you've got one chance to turn, you don't have a second turn opportunity up further up the road to come in.
I'd like to just address what you said, because I think that, I'm not sure that, I guess I don't look at it that way. If you, a good example is the Planet Fitness sign right now that's up, and if anyone has driven by there, I think it's pretty appropriate for the size of the, the size of the building and the size of the space that they have. That's about two times the size. They elected not to do a pylon sign, not to do a panel, I'm sorry, on the pylon sign. And because they thought that the one, the, the way the zoning read, it was too small for them to be seen from the street. So, that's an example of what two would look like, so although it sounds big, it really isn't. And the issue we're having is not like for Planet Fitness, because it's pretty big and it looks good and if it was a little smaller, would it, you know, could you see it? Yeah, you could. It's the small tenants, which you don't see just yet. It's the Great Clips that only has twenty feet of frontage, that you're not gonna be able to see their sign that well or read it, three hundred feet back. It's the Nail Salon, which is next to the Great Clips, again, it's small. It's Tucker's, which is next to that, which doesn't have a lot of frontage, so it becomes, the sign becomes too small for the look of the plaza.
Right.
That's what we're going for.
And, right, and so, and, and the reason that, obviously, and I, and I understand where you're coming from, but they're saying that the one foot square, the one square foot is because they don't want it cluttered, confusing. So, my concern would be if you go to the two square feet, you know, for the sign, then you, you start, you know, it's Great Clips, Nail Salon, Tucker's, does it all just read one long sentence? Or is, you know, you don't have that space between the two and then it, then you're kind of not in the, in the spirit of the ordinance, which we're, it may be a little bit ahead of, because it's a little trouble.
I think we showed you an elevation of that, because I was, I was concerned about that also, we showed you what it would look like, I think in the package that you submitted.
Yeah, I'm not positive, yes.
So, you can see it, that we don't have that problem because we do have space in between, in our design. You know, we've given ourselves panels in between spaces to, so that things get spread out. That's why it's a little bit, I think it'd be good if that, that's there just to look at the length of it. And so, we don't have that problem where, oh my god, the sign's too big. The other piece that is critical for us is that we're tough on our leases, so we have to approve every sign that goes up, they can't just put a sign up.
Right.
And we have to, we, and we dictate how they can do it, what they have to use, how it has to look, where it has to be sent it over the building. So, it's not just, okay, let's put our sign up wherever, it's gotta be over the building, can't be too crowded to the next space, so even though we're... So even though we're asking for the two, it may not be two, it may be one point eight, maybe one point seven. But we were trying to avoid to have fifteen tenants come to you and say, I want a variance.
Right.
So we said, okay, let's look at it from the big picture, let's, it, it's not offensive at all,
and let's try to get the, the two, uh, the two feet per foot, right, is that what it is? For the, yeah.
Yeah, the two versus the one, um, approved, so that we have a little flexibility. Because in the future, um, we may not have the tenants we have today. It may be cut in half, and all of a sudden, we're gonna want like a bigger sign, like in one area, maybe not. We can live within the two, two to one on all of the signs, we believe.
Okay.
The other point I just wanna make is, we didn't go after the typical pylon sign, um, because we were, you know, our imaging and our branding is important to the success of, we believe, to the success of the shopping center. And so when we did the pylon sign, we have a big pylon sign, we don't have a big panel pylon sign, it was intentional.
Mm-hmm.
Attractive, pretty, get the name out there, tenants, we have a, we have a nice frontage, even though it's setback. So together, we think they blend well with the two to one. We don't think it's overpowering, and we've tried to demonstrate that. And we were trying to avoid having twelve to fifteen tenants come to you and say, I need a bigger sign, I need a bigger sign, I need a bigger sign.
Okay.
Uh, I would comment, we have additional depictions of the signage, but wary of your comment earlier that you're not accepting any, any additional materials.
No, no.
Um, I, I have them available, I've got ten copies, and I'm gonna provide you, to give you a visual if you like, but if not, that's fine too, it's completely up to how.
I just was, and, and I might have jumped ahead, I mean, my question might have been a little bit more towards gear, towards the next one to the spirit of the ordinance. Why don't I have you go, unless there's any other questions on the, regarding substantial justice, well, I'll just go right to the next one. All right.
Thank you. On the second, uh, criteria is the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I won't worry reading the entire passage again, but again, it's because of the nature of this particular site, given its, uh, length, its depth, how far back the building is from the roadway, that this particular signage provides adequate and functional signage in a way that would, uh, allow folks to know, uh, what is there and what tenants are on site, and, uh, there's no su- risk again of being any cluttering or confusing with respect to the pylon versus the, um, signage on the walls. And again, I would note, the two to one is allowed if we took down the front signage. The issue is cluttering between the front sign and the back sign, the signs on the walls, and we don't have that here. So that's, that's number two.
Okay. Any questions? Um, number three?
Number three, um, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the approval of the large signs will facilitate successful development of the property in an extraordinarily difficult market. And we've had some discussion of that the last time we were here. Uh, and again, but for the existence of the ground sign, the larger signs on the wall, uh, would be allowed as a matter of right. It's just a matter of, we're trying to have both directional's here to allow for, uh, the public to have the, the best insight as to what's there and available. And given the distance between them, two hundred and some feet, two hundred and fifty feet from the front sign to the signs on the walls, we don't think there's an issue of clutter.
Any questions? Okay, next one.
Uh, number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. Um, here again, we've heard no evidence, um, that there's any, uh, diminution in value of the properties surrounding. And again, um, they're each individually allowed, that is a ground sign or the wall signs as a matter of right, and there simply isn't any suggestion that, um, that two together would somehow impair property values in the neighborhood.
Uh, unnecessary hardship?
Uh, unnecessary hardship. I'll turn to the, um, no fair and substantial relationship exists test, that's on page three of our, uh, comments. Um, again, the general purpose of the ordinance is to allow for development of signage that facilitates effective communication and wayfinding, letting folks know what's there. And you're balancing that over, um, a cluttered sign or confusing sign or overwhelming signage, and we don't have that in this instance. And I, I would say that, um, typically, you would have a smaller retail site where you have fewer tenants or fewer folks on a, uh, in a facade. Here we have multiple tenants over a very large site, and therefore the larger signs, the signs allowed as a matter of right, typically, would be sufficient here and appropriate and not overwhelming. Um, with respect to the proposed use as a reasonable one, again, it comes down to the unique nature of this lot being very large, having a large, uh, uh, area of frontage, and then having so much setback from the roadway for, um, uh, traffic.
All right, any question, um, any questions for gentlemen regarding, before I open up the public? Okay, uh, we'll be set up the public, Jim. Is there anybody that'd like to speak, uh, before I open up the public, any, no, the questions, okay. Anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I do have a red, a letter I need to read in that was, again, that was not in favor of the petition. Um, this was from Stuart Hollander at thirty-three Pondview Drive. Uh, okay, a petition of, for variance regarding increasing signage size. Comments, the proposed variance is too broad. It would apply to all the businesses on the property. There are already two businesses on the property, Planet Fitness and Dollar General, both of which clearly have adequate si- adequate signage that is readily visible from any place on the road that has line of sight to the buildings. In addition, the two buildings have yet to be built, uh, are going to be located much closer to the road. The two buildings, both apparently quite substantial in size, will be able to have, excuse me, quite adequate, adequate signage without the variance. Further, the use of photos from Google Maps, which is what we ended, we got here, to show how far away things are is misleading. The lenses of Google Maps are designed to take wider view than normal of, of view, and objects can appear further than they actually are. Increased signage may be reasonable for smaller tenants, but the variance as written should be denied. And then, um, I'm gonna, there's some handwritten stuff here, I'll put into it as well. Double-sized signs will be allo- would be allowed with the variance on the larger sections would result in overwhelming the possibly, um, garish signage. Uh, signed Stuart Hollander. That is against, is there anybody else that like, uh, if you'd like to, if you'd like to address that, you may.
I, I would, and two, two points. One is, while he refers to it as double-sized signs, we actually look at it the reverse, that we're actually getting half-size size that we typically would without the front. The other thing I'd point out is he said, for example, that the Planet Fitness sign seems adequate and appropriate, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
That is basically the, exactly what we're asking for. I'm not sure the exact ratio, I think it's like one point nine or so. Um, and so it actually indicates that, yeah, that's reasonable based on what he saw on the site itself, and what would, uh, be included in additional signage would, um, be the same size and, and wouldn't be problematic either.
No, no, yes. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this petition? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, cu- questions, comments?
Just, general question, do you know what the intent was to allow the larger signs if there is not a sign on the street? Why?
Unfortunately, I don't, the ordinance has been in place for many years, so I do not know.
I just wonder why they were allowed, if there's nothing at the street, and allow a larger sign on the building, but if there's one on the street, then they can't.
Visibility.
What's that?
More visibility if you don't have the pylon sign.
What do you mean, more visibility? You know, did you say more or poor?
More.
More.
More. Okay.
And with that particular site, um...
Yeah.
With that particular site, um, to put that many signs, notices on the pylon sign, you can't read them.
No.
You can't read them going, going down the street, so even though the pylon sign is there, to announce the center, which is appropriate, um, there are two things, I think, having the largest or allowing the larger signs on the buildings will make them more visible. And secondly, if you do the smaller size, then the space between the letters is also reduced, so they're less readable from the street than having the larger signs with a little more gap between the letters.
Okay. Right, I understand why they're doing that. My, I think my, maybe I didn't state the question properly, or I... Why would they allow the larger signs without the pylon? But with a pylon, you have to have a smaller sign.
Be- because, because you've, because you've got two, you've got two signs advertising.
As opposed to one.
As opposed to one, and so they said, if you've got two, then you do a small one, but it doesn't really make sense.
All right, I didn't know if there was something beyond that, thank you.
Right?
Yeah, Rod, think, if I had a sign the size of that screen, that says Caterpillar on it, out on a pylon, a standalone building, I don't need quite as much on the building because I've got this one. Um, in this particular case, because of the distance from the travel way, think if they had a twenty-five-foot storefront for a coffee and donut shop, they would have twenty-five square feet of sign space on the building. That's less than the window, not counting the casing. Take that window and set it at the congregationless church, and what are you gonna see?
Right.
Nothing.
A window.
That's what I thought.
But if you double it, now you might be able to read it.
Okay, no, I, I'm not arguing what they wanna do.
I think that's, I think that's where it comes from, Rod.
Okay, okay.
Just understanding why. Gotcha. So that being said, you wanna make a motion?
Sure.
All right.
Two in a row. Uh, I make the motion to accept.
Right before you make a motion, I am gonna, Lynn did show up late for the meeting. I'm going to appoint her to sit in, to take her normal seat, and, uh, have Lenny sit in for Tony.
It's, yeah, it's really Tony's seat, so.
Yeah, so, Lenny, you're still in, sitting in for Tony. Lynn, you're back on. Now you can make the motion.
Thank you.
I make the motion by, for the variance, except by Apple Development Limited Partnership under section seventeen point ten point four point G of the zoning ordinance to permit a parcel with more than one business establishment to have a wall signs throughout the property measuring two square feet of sign face per linear foot of building facade, whereas one foot of sign face per linear foot is permitted where ground signage is also present. The parcel is located at three sixty, three six zero, Daniel Webster Highway in the C dash two general commercial Aquifer Conserva- Conservation Planned Residential Overlay and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. Tax map four D dash three, lot zero zero one, case number two zero one eight dash twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, opposed by Rod, second by Kath- Kathy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same five zero zero. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks good. Can't wait to see the rest of it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, next, order of business, discussion possible action items regarding ida- other areas of concern, which I need, kinda need to talk to Rob about, any items of discussion? Okay. Um, as I'm sure all, some of you, or if not all of you are aware, Tony is, uh, has opted not to renew his seat on the board, therefore we do have a full seat opening at the moment. Um, so, I know that, I think, uh, obviously you.
But he technically holds the seat until his replacement is appointed.
But we're, so we're in the process of looking at it, which I was, thank you for letting me finish. I was looking, I was, we are currently looking at, uh, potential replacements for Tony's seat. Um, so, till they, till he's in there, the, we'll have alternates fill in for him. Um, next item, unless there's anything from Community Development. Next item is approval of a minutes, the June twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Do I?
You're on motion to accept the minutes?
Motion, accept the minutes, do I have a second? Motion by Kathleen, second by Lynn. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, but you could watch, you watch it on TV.
Three?
I will concur, all right, I'll go yes.
Four zero zero, it's, they're done.
Five zero zero.
Five zero zero, sir.
It is legal.
Rod.
Yes, it is.
All right, listen, a long enough week, I'll be driving crazy. All right, is there anything else before we adjourn? All right.
I will adjourn.
And, uh, second, all in favor, boom, done.